Free stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would I please ask for a moment of silence in honor of the Wilkinson family and all that they went through in their loss? Thank you. We did not have a report out of closed session this evening. I'd like a motion, please, for the adoption of our agenda.
That's all right.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
Do we have a student vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of the agenda is presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's three oh two. We have no recognitions this evening, so we can begin with public comment on non-agenda items. And I have one card. If you would like to speak, there are cards out there to fill out and to turn them in. Liz Black? Oh, I'm sorry, Liz. This is item ten. I just looked at that and noticed that. I thought it was for this. Is there anyone who wants to comment on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. We'll just pass one over so we can start. Luke? You're up.
Evening, everyone. How you doing? So recently, Mr. Jolly at our school, he's been a long-term sub for one of the teachers that's been away. And recently, he's been forced to resign because of a video that surfaced in his class. The video was about two kids that were messing around, and once Jolly found out what was happening, the two kids were done. The class clowns had finished what they were doing, and he laughed because he thought it was nothing to be afraid of, and he knew the kids were safe. And then he told them right to go back to business. And today's the first day that the kids don't have him in class, and everyone is pretty frightened and concerned about him, and they don't want him to leave. A couple of kids are here tonight with us. They really want Jolly to stay, and they just tell me all the time how great of a teacher he is. Jolly teaches three classes, three stats classes and one calc, if I'm correct. And students from all these classes have come up and talked to me about how much they'd like him to stay. And they all tell me their concerns about how they don't know how to finish the semester with a new sub, and how at this late stage in the game, how difficult it would be to have a new teacher come in and have to start over the learning process, trying to get accustomed to that teacher and their teaching style, and try to learn from there. And they say that it would really take a toll on their learning. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if there's anything that we can do to help Mr. Jolly be reinstated.
Thank you. Beck Kessler?
Senior at Laguna Beach High School. I am Mr. Jolly's class, and I was there when the incident happened, when the two kids were pretending to faint. It was very obvious that when they were doing it, like, just two normal jokesters, they didn't care about doing anything serious. All they were doing is trying to get a laugh or two out of people. And I was right in front of them. You could see there was no danger there. And having this long-term sub now leaving us, it will disrupt, honestly, my education because having a new teacher teaching new stuff to me that doesn't know what happened and what the other, our long-term sub was going to teach us is now messed up, and the final will be messed up, and my overall grade and learning experience will be gone, as well as all the other people in the class. I have at least four people in the class that have come up to me or texted me that saying, "I don't know why Mr. Jolly left." Like, he's a very good long-term sub, and they all want him back because they all want to finish the semester with someone who's been with them the whole time. My dad, who wanted to be here tonight, couldn't because he is teaching at Cal State Full Ten, and he is very upset as well because he wants me to get a good grade and learn what I signed up for. Because I signed up for stats, and so I could learn stats, not so I can learn half of stats. So I want to finish my semester with him so I can finish out my course. And finally, we can get him reinstated to the school, and then after the first semester, you can do an investigation on seeing if what happened was real so we could get him to finish his teaching, and so everyone can finish with a good grade in the class. Thank you.
Warren Ingersoll?
So Mr. Jolly is my stats teacher, and he's a really good teacher, and I really enjoy the way he teaches, and I think what happened was a misunderstanding, and that he should definitely have a second chance, and that he shouldn't have another chance at teaching our class. So, thank you.
Owen? No, well, go ahead then, Luca. No, that's fine. I have your card, too. Yes. But you can go. I have his card, too.
Hi. I'm speaking on the same topic as the other kids. Sorry. I really am not like the, I'm not the best kid at math. I think the highest score I've ever received in academic class was like a ninety or like an eighty-nine. That was in freshman year. Mr. Jolly's class, I have currently a ninety-five. It's the highest class I've ever gotten in a math class. I don't think stats is any easier than any other class. I don't think it's an easier time for me in my life. If anything, it's harder and more stressful. And for some reason, I haven't gotten below a ninety-five on every single test that we've taken in that class. I think a lot of this can be attributed, or is attributed, to Mr. Jolly. He's got, he has this very strange way of breaking through to kids that I personally don't see in a lot of teachers. He's, honestly, I see more similarities in his teaching to how a coach gets through to an athlete than, and I'm speaking as an athlete. I've played water polo for some time, and so it's this very, he's not like other teachers. He's able to make bonds with students and break through to students in ways that a lot of teachers really can't. And I think that is something worth keeping at the school. And also, to speak from my point of view as also somebody who likes to have fun in class, it's, I know with the kids who, they're just kids. They can get away with doing stuff like that in any class. I've seen them get away with stuff like that in any class. It's not specific to him. This is something that kids do in every single class at the school, so I don't know why we should be reprimanding one specific teacher for something that happens in basically every class on campus. Thank you.
Owen?
Hello. Yeah. My name is Owen DeBuss. I'm taught by Mr. Jolly in the stats class. I wanted to sit here and talk about Mr. Jolly's traits, his approach to the classrooms, all the students' reaction, and all the students' approach towards Mr. Jolly. I'm here to talk about a specific problem that happened in class, and I'm the suspect in this action, and Mr. Jolly is the victim. So when this action took place, it was a hazardous, like, action. It put danger to myself. However, I enforced it onto Mr. Jolly. I told my friends about it, and it happened towards the end of class. So it was not disturbing any, it was not disturbing any schoolwork, not disturbing any school time. It was towards the last minute of class, and the bell rang when this was taking place. So this action just put me in some sort of risk, but I knew the risk I was going to go through. And when this was taking place, when this was occurring, people were taking videos. And so some videos just stayed in place and nothing really happened. But then, I guess, one video maybe got to a parent or got to someone, and then, so a complaint went through. And in this video, it showed Mr. Jolly laughing and kind of confused about this situation because he did not realize what was going on when this action was taking place. He did not realize if it was dangerous. He thought it was a joke. He thought it was like any other prank. As Luca said, the people, like, kids are going to mess around in any class, so it doesn't necessarily mean it happened because Mr. Jolly was there. It happened because we have teenagers in the class, and I'm one of them, so it happened because of me. And I've been feeling guilty because I don't see this as a coincidence. I see this as a, like, as just kind of like the final step or the final, like, the final step towards it. So they just took the action into Mr. Jolly's case. And so I believe that when I did this, I kind of broke Mr. Jolly, me and Mr. Jolly's trust. Me and Mr. Jolly, we kind of had a small connection. He would talk to me about my hometown, my home country, and I would talk to him about his, about his history of being a football player. So a bunch of, like, small things that maybe, that we grew a connection through, so we built trust. But as I did this, I broke his trust because I put him in a situation where I was being, I was putting myself in a hazardous situation, but he did not realize that. And him not realizing that put him in a, put him in a bad situation because others do not know, others do not know what happened, and so they think that Mr. Jolly allowed it to happen where he didn't really know what was happening and just played along as if it was any other joke or any other action that students would go through.
It turns off when the time's up. Thank you. Are there any other speakers for non-agenda items? If you didn't turn in a card, that's okay.
I'd really like to thank you for coming forward and speaking about what you believe. I don't know Mr. Jolly, but I have a much better understanding of the situation now, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. We'll move on then to our reports, and we begin with our student board rep. And Drew, you're giving the report?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so up at El Moro in TOW, they're on the trimester system. So their first trimester ends this Friday, November fifteenth. And for the first time, we will be using online report cards, which should be very interesting. Then, the November twenty-fifth is Colonial Days at El Moro, and those are the two days before Thanksgiving break, which should be very exciting. I remember when I was doing it in fifth grade, and it should be, it's a lot of fun to do. Up at Thurston, the web leaders are going on a team-building exercise. They're going to be doing a lot of team-building activities, and they're going to take part in community service to a homeless shelter. Then on November twenty-second, the web leaders are going to present to their peers about what they learned in kind of, with a theme of kind of giving back to the community and the importance of community service. At the high school, the sports signing day is tomorrow, where a lot of seniors will be signing to play sports at higher education. Then, along with sports, they're shifting into the winter season now, so a lot of fall sports are finishing and moving on to the winter season. For theater, we just finished our production of Our Town. I thought it went very well. It sent a really powerful message to a lot of people in the audience. Mr. Dressler was there, so it was really fun for kids to work with him because I had him in seventh grade before he retired, so it was really fun to work with him again. At ASB, we hosted our new student lunch last Friday, which went very successfully. We have our food drive this month, and the classes are in a competition with each other. We had a spikeball tournament for Halloween, and we had anti-bowling week, which was to promote unity. AP Art History went to the Getty Villa, and I went to the, it's a beautiful place, and talking to a lot of AP Art History students, they loved it. It's a beautiful place to go and learn about art. The end of semester is coming pretty fast, and a lot of college apps are kind of in the process. I'm deep in college apps right now, and I know a lot of seniors are. And I would like to thank the College and Career Center for everything they do. We have a really good College and Career Center who's really passionate about helping kids, and it's a really great tool to use during this whole crazy college app process. Then, unfortunately, we lost Jasmine, a student at Laguna Beach. I personally didn't know her, but I know of a lot of people that it affected. It's very unfortunate because we live in such a small community where everyone knows each other. So I hope that everyone could process grief in a very supportive way, and we have a lot of resources at our school for students that are struggling. So it was just a very kind of difficult time, but I'm happy how kind of together our community came. Thank you.
Parking units. Mary Ann Biden for Labufa.
Labufa negotiations team met with the district team to plan and prepare for our upcoming negotiations this year with our full contract opening. Sarah Hopper will be joining the team this year because we had another person step off. And we're in the process of forming various committees for articles in the contract to gather more information from staff and faculty about changes that we need to see.
Thank you. Margaret Prestissier?
Yes. We have just closed our survey for pre-negotiations, and unfortunately, our participation was a little less than in past years. Perhaps that means that people are happy and that there's not many things they're concerned about. I will be sharing the survey with the CSCA business meeting tomorrow, and then sharing the survey with the administration the next time we meet so that we can review our articles and where we're going for negotiations. Also, tomorrow is the last month for nominations for the president, the second vice president, the recording secretary, and the communications officer for CSCA. And we'll see how that goes at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a report from our school resource officer, Corporal Ashton.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so as you can see, I have facial here, so I want to explain, this is-
November.
November, Movember. So Laguna Beach Police Department is taking part in Movember to raise awareness for men for the various casters that they can come up with. So as you can see, you know, this is twelve days in the growing. I've learned a lot about myself, that I'm getting older because I've probably plucked fifty hairs from my beard, and last year is probably five hairs. And I thought I have duct, like, I have duct tape all around my face, so. Anyway, so I'm going to carry on. So these are some of the events that took place since the last board meeting. One was Walk to School Day, which was a very great event that took part, placed at Top of the World Elementary School. Our entire, our command staff, officers working the beat showed up and walked kids to school from Otta Laguna, from the fire road, from various locations. It was well-received. Our kids loved it. October twenty-fifth, participated in Boo Blast at El Moro Elementary School. We had four to five officers that showed up throughout the entire event. That was well-received. It was a great opportunity for officers to just interact with the kids. And one thing that I asked for in the recommendations for this school year was to just have more police involvement in the activities. I don't want our kids just to know the school resource officer, but to know all our officers. We have some great people here in our organization that really support the cause and are developing those partnerships with our kids. Attended a safety meeting last week with Top of the World with their leadership and staff members, as well as Thurston Middle School. Last Tuesday, I attended another safety meeting. We covered some concerns, areas of improvement, things that fall in alignment with our district safety plan, which is very beneficial. And then this past Friday, we put on a, I put on a staff training for active shooter protocol, giving staff a better understanding on how to respond when there is a critical incident on campus. And it doesn't just involve active shooter, but any dangerous person or situation that may come on the campus. And it was well-received, and I got a lot of positive feedback about that training, and so I look forward to doing more in the future. And as you know, this was a rough month for our school district, our police department, dealing with a lot of things, but more importantly, the loss of our student Jasmine Wilkinson. I would just like to say from the bottom of my heart, it was nice to see the collaboration and the support, not only from our community, but from our school district and our police department working together, just to keep the morale up everywhere and to really come to support this family in a time of dire need. And it really opened my eyes to see just how great our school district and our community is, and our police department for that matter. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board members, we'll start with you, then Perry.
Good evening. I also want to say I'm really grateful to our staff and community for pulling together for the Wilkinson family and for all of our students. It's made me so happy to be living here in Laguna. As for school power trustee meeting, Dr. Valoria explained the two proposals that were in our board packet, and as you know, number two was chosen. But there was a lot of enthusiasm for number one. They just need some more specifics, and so Dr. Valoria and staff have ideas of how they're going to work on that. The teachers were receptive to the new way of doing teacher grants and really enjoyed Steve Semelian's presentation, where teachers will now, at the dinner dance, present what they want, and then people will bid right there. But if you're a teacher that nobody comes and nobody bids for you, the school power will still help you out. Our town was fabulous. Drew was a wonderful constable, and it was lots of fun to see Mark Dressler, and I wondered how it was working with him on the other side. He had told me that he was really worried about having to memorize so many lines, but it sure looked like he did. And of course, Zoe was great, everyone was. It was very nice to have Greg Long here last week, speaking with the kids about surfing and conservation. And when I talked to him, he told me that Laguna groms are amazing. I'd also like to acknowledge what a fabulous job our students did at the city council meeting, advocating for keeping the Arch Beach Heights and the TOW routes. They're very well-spoken. Some of the high school kids use it both ways, some because of lack of a car, but some believe in published transportation and leaving less imprint on the earth. Thurston kids use it more for transportation home or to go to the beach, which is really healthy. So there were so many kids there, and then it got later and later, and more and more kids left, but a lot of kids stayed. Let's see. I was honored to be invited to spend time in the advanced art studio class by the students and teacher after giving them a tour of the current art and nature exhibition. The students were learning techniques of using multiple layers of paint and had brought in their own objects, like one girl brought in a spirit bear from her grandmother. Some brought in photographs. One of the boys brought in a mirror so he could do himself. Somebody brought in plastic teeth. It was, and it was really fascinating, the things that they chose. Let's see. I also had the chance really to spend some time then with Mr. Miller, who I hadn't, you know, had only met in passing. He walked me down, and he was able to spend the whole hour and a half in the class with the students, and so that was interesting. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Yes, so I attended the school power trustee meeting last week. Board member Perry mentioned it, and I wanted to thank Michael Keller, Jun Chen, and Brian Cool. They presented the fund to need, which was really well-received, and they stayed in the room to answer questions from the trustees, which is really interactive, and it just shows how parent volunteers and our district leaders work together. The trustees did vote, and they decided on the expansion and growth of funding existing programs that they have been supporting for the last three to four years, which I think is a good investment of their funds and of putting more breadth and depth into the programs that we already have developed. I also wanted to thank Michael Keller and his team for all the support services during this time with the Wilkinson family, for our student body, our staff. I think having a social-emotional department, our social workers, the counselors, is a really added benefit that, under Dr. Valoria's watch, was brought on to this district, and I think we've utilized it really well, and it's valuable for our students. And I also want to reflect on just the kind of spot-on communication that we got. We've had a lot of big things going on in the district last couple of weeks, and we get very quick responses. We get lots of information through Parent Square. Parent Square is excellent. It's easy, it's handy, and you can look at your schedule if you need to see it for what a four-day week looks like, or you get information on some things that are troublesome and you need to be alerted. So, thank you for that.
Can you hear me? I apologize for being late today. I also want to thank Dr. Valoria and Dr. Keller for the support for Jasmine and the family and the adults. You guys are coming on everything else, but the adults, they feel that their drive every day through the canyon, and they felt just their own sadness about it. And they were comforted by the staff. They were comforted either at the funeral, or they made comments, or the celebration of life, or they made comments of how they had been helped and supported, that they're okay, that it's, they're okay, right, to continue to drive, and they just felt that support. So I wanted to share that and really share all of the work that Dr. Keller is doing in social-emotional support, and how important it is to have a department for that. And then also equally proud of the kids for going down and speaking about the trolley and how important it is for them, and having city services, right, for them and keeping them for them. It was awesome. I also attended Community Coalition. And they were discussing, there's a conference on January thirty-first in Berkeley for teaching marijuana awareness and prevention. And then there's, they did their press release on tobacco and vaping prevention. And then there's also a well-being tour report, Pain in the Nation series, Strategy to Prevent Adolescent Substance Use and Suicide. What's that called again? Pain in the Nation series. It's a series. Strategies to Prevent Adolescent Substance Use and Suicide. And then it was, it's so helpful to have Dr. Keller in those meetings because everyone has ideas of things that they want to do, and he really has the knowledge of what is being done and what's integrated well into what's working. And then areas where things aren't working or might need continuous improvement where he could pull something in. So it's amazing to have him in that space. Thank you for doing that. And it's, it's nice to meet every other month because we really get to just dive in, so. And Dr. Keller and I won some prize. I know it's no shock that we've got competitive.
Thank you. I just want, I went to the PTA council meeting, and they are always very busy, and the PTA presidents come and report on their activities at their schools. They support a lot of events for families and for students. They, Jenny Solberg was a principal at this meeting, and of course, it was right in line with the current interest about safety, and she gave good reports and good updates on that and really framed it under, that's part of what we're about with continuous improvement. So anytime that we step back and we reevaluate and see where we need to, where we can improve going forward, and that's, that's part of our process, and it touches everything. So that was, there was a lot of interest in that, and then there's also interest in fifth-grade science camp was a big, another big topic of discussion, and that, going forward with that. And I was able to attend the high school PTA meeting, and they don't get as much attendance at the high school PTA meetings, which is sort of the way it is, but Jimmy Azadian has some plans for a fundraiser where you don't attend. I think, I think you've seen different-
You just give money.
Right.
You just, you don't have to go to anything.
Right, that's right.
You just buy an auction item.
Right. That's the selling factor. I've seen other charities do that where it's like, okay, you don't want to go to another event, so he's hoping, and he put what they were going to do in the fall, and they decided that there are too many things going on, so they're going to go for early spring. And I do, I think you all hit on it, that we really have a highly supportive district, and I think we were ahead of the game in really addressing the social-emotional learning and the social-emotional support. And the things that I continue to read about things going on across the country with students also going into college years, that it's a growing, growing concern, and the numbers of, like, college students and young adults, that the incidences of depression have really skyrocketed, and that affects their lives significantly and what they can put together. So, you know, if we can get the groundwork in, I look at it as how we started years ago with working with our elementary kids, with character counts, and with Rachel's Challenge, and we started, and we saw a change in kids as they grew up in that and became more aware of each other, more empathetic, and more kindness, that it does work. And so I think it's, it's really beneficial to the students in our district that we have been ahead of that, and it's much appreciated. So the other thing I wanted to comment is I appreciate how much information we get in the updates. There's a lot of good things to read in there, and I feel that's a way that I can stay really informed about what's going on, is to make sure that I read those, because the work that goes into- that goes into providing us that information is a significant task. The other is I'm appreciative that you responded to my request, and we got the information on the students that are now in college that went to continue their athletics, because I mean, I don't know if anybody else does that, but I mean, if I see something listed and, and it's going to be like on the Pac-12 station, I think I want to, I watched the Fisher sisters, definitely, and other ones that have gone on, and it's just, so it's kind of a singular request for me, but they, you guys supported it, so it was very quick. And so if that was Dr. Allman or Lance, whoever did that, I really, please pass on the thanks for that. Thank you, Dr. Valoria.
I just, again, want to thank our team. This last week was a real challenging week for the entire district as a whole. I do want to thank the Orange County Department of Education, we called them, we have a kind of a mutual aid group that we were able to call on, and they came out, and we saw some old faces come, and Kay Austensen, and it was just nice to have some extra folks on hand to help us out and to help our staff out as well. Again, I think as was stated by Drew, it was a tragic event that happened, but the silver lining, if there is one, is just the way the city and the students and the parents really came out and supported the family. The celebration of life on Saturday was, was truly that, was very well done, was very well attended, and again, just appreciate the community for their outpouring of support for this family. And I know it won't end today and tomorrow, it will continue on. Received a phone call today just about how people want to continue to support them, so just so appreciative of that. We've had a lot going on as well, just in kind of different realms. We have staff leaving here tomorrow to go to DC for the Blue Ribbon Award, which we'll hear a little more about from Chris. But I just want to say again, I'm really, really proud of the work that's going on in the school district, and I'm just grateful that the board has continued to support the work that we're doing, so thank you.
Okay, Lisa. Jeff? Okay, then we move to our principal report for Mr. Duddy.
Are you leaving for DC tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. Happy to see you here today. It's not like knowledge.
We have some visual support to go along with it. Okay, well, I'm very excited to be here this evening with you to share some great news about Elmore Elementary School and the National Exemplary High Performing Blue Ribbon School So first of all, you might be wondering, well, how does this all happen? So, schools are nominated based on their school-wide student performance scores as well as their subgroup scores. And Elmore is among the state's highest performing schools, and we were nominated by the California Department of Education based on our Gold Ribbon School Awards and our, our student test scores. And then there's two categories. One is exemplary high performing, and another is achievement gap closing award, and we're in the exemplary high performing category. And so here's some information about our school and kind of the history you see at the top. We've been a California distinguished school twice. We received the Gold Ribbon Award in 2016 as well, and we also received a little-known award as a Title I Academic Achievement Award School in 2016. And then that's when we were nominated for the award this year. And you can see below, our largest subgroup is socio-economically disadvantaged, and some people might not be aware of that, because when you look at Elmore between Newport Coast and Emerald Bay, some people might think, well, gosh, of course, you know, they have all, all the ingredients they need to have successful students, but our attendance area goes all the way to South Laguna, all the way out the canyon, and it's kind of hit and miss, and so we do have a lot of students that come to us that are socio-economically disadvantaged. We also have a large number of students with disabilities. When I say large, I mean relatively large for a school population, 11 percent, and those students are doing very well and getting the support that they need. So, what were our test scores? You can see, last year, we had 88 percent of our students who were meeting or exceeding the standard in English Language Arts, and that was up from 86 percent the year before. And then if you look at that in comparison to our county and our state, you can see where Elmore sits there with the green and blue bars for meeting and exceeding the standards in Language Arts. And then in math, this is an area where we've shown great improvement over the last few years, and as you can see, 81 percent of the students are meeting or exceeding the standards, and that's up from 78 percent the year before. And again, when we look at the Elmore students in comparison to their cohorts in Orange County and the state of California, they're doing quite well. And so, the Blue Ribbon application, we received it in, via email, and I already talked about demographics a little bit, but really what's involved in that. It's pretty involved, and so the first part is a school summary. So a couple of things that I highlighted during that portion of the application was our whole child approach, the balanced approach that we have. It's not just academics, but we have the arts, and we also support the students with social emotional learning as well, and I think some people were talking about that earlier, and I think it has made a big difference in our school culture and in our students as well. The other thing that was highlighted during the summary was our professional learning community for our teachers, and how our teachers are supported with professional development, not only for our stificated staff, but for our classified staff as well, to build capacity in staff to meet our students' needs. And then this was the, the bulk of the application here. You can see which topics there are, but a few things that I'll highlight under curriculum instruction. Number one was the hands-on STEAM lab that we have at Elmore, and how that's been a, an addition in the last five years or so, and how we like to emphasize science. And then I also, under other curriculum areas, talked a lot about our Visual and Performing Arts program, how every student has strings, band, chorus, as well as our technology program that is very robust, where we have one-to-one devices for our students and coding lessons, and then that all culminates in our Bring Your Own Device program in fifth grade. Under special populations, we talked about our, how we support our students through our multi-tiered systems of support and our reading intervention program. And then finally, our school supports, which, again, you can see some of those supports there, Ms. Lawson helping a student, our students working together, helping each other. And under climate and culture, we talked about positive behavior intervention and support, character counts, No Place For Hate, and Using The Growth Mindset. And engaging families and community, you can see Liz is here today from our, or tonight from our PTA, and the PTA is just always involved. The parents are constantly supporting our school. The volunteer hours submitted to Elmore are off the charts. If, if we had to put a dollar amount on it, I think we did that one year, and it was over hundreds of thousands of dollars, the amount of hours that parents support our school with. And then we have our English Learner Advisory Committee, where we also reach out to families who might not speak English, but we want them to know that we have support for them as well. Professional development, that goes without saying, we love to train our staff, as I mentioned earlier, so that they can meet the needs of our students. And then school leadership, our mantra has been, continuous improvement, meaningful relationships, and every student, every day. The application gets reviewed, and then you wait for months on end and wondering what's going to happen, and then finally, there's a press release that comes out, and well, there's some emails that come out before that, letting you know that you have qualified and will be receiving the award. So as I mentioned earlier, Lisa, myself, and Triana Ramazan, who helped me with the application, she was very instrumental in the team. There was a team of teachers, Shannon Velada, Kathleen Margarettich, Mary Ann Lawson, they all helped, and we worked very hard together to put forth the best work we, we knew how to do. And so, like I said, Triana was a big leader in that, so she's coming along with us. We leave first thing tomorrow morning, and hopefully our flights aren't delayed and everything goes smoothly. We get to Washington, and we have two days where we have, there's some keynote speakers, we get to network with other Blue Ribbon schools, as well as on Friday, it culminates with actually receiving the award and taking some pictures. So I was, my pleasure to share that with you. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to comment that you look so proud, and it's contagious.
I am very proud, yes. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, please pass on to your, all who worked on it, because I know that the preparation, the writing, and the applications is key. You know, there, you can have great programs, but if you don't know how to present them, and it will make a difference. And so, you know, we have, we have a history of the awards, and this is a big one, so it'll be a good trip.
Yep. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's gonna be cold.
There's a cold snap.
Yeah, I know.
It'll be okay. California people can survive in the cold weather.
Yeah, for three days.
Thank you. We next have a consent calendar. We have a lot on the consent calendar, items A through P. Are there any items that board members would like to pull off? Just to discuss?
Just comments.
Okay. If it's a discussion, we need to pull it off. It's just a brief comment. Okay. Peggy, Carol, anything? Okay, then I'd like a motion, please, for items A through P. Public comment, yes. Public comment first, thank you, my mentor here. Any public comment on the agenda items on the consent calendar? Okay. Seeing none, and we'd like a motion, please.
Send it to a second.
Carol and Peggy. And now, before we blow the comments.
I had emailed Dr. Valoria about this earlier. The item E, the approval of acceptance of gifts in kind donation about the Elmore greenhouse and the garden, I'm thrilled with that, but I wondered also what was in place for using As far as, you know, we don't have the same person that we had last year, how is that going to be structured?
I couldn't answer that question. So that'd defer to Chris as to how they're planning on doing that. My understanding, each grade level has their own plot, the teachers are excited to get back out there into that space, and I believe they have parents and folks that are going to help make it happen, but I'll be happy to put down the weekly as an update for you as well.
Okay, great, because I know at TOW, somebody gets paid, so, right, right. And then, item J for the yoga, which I'm also thrilled about, and I just kind of wanted to know how, you said how many hours she was going to be there, but what's the, the number of hours that she'll be teaching students compared to the number of hours she will be teaching PE teachers? How, how does that work?
It's going to be somewhat in tandem. Most of the support at the middle school is going to be teaching students directly, and same as well at the high school. There's a little bit of built-in time, about a half hour when she's there with lessons, when she's there for an hour and a half lesson, to work with the, the teacher as well. So the bulk of the time will be spent with students.
Okay, great. And is it a regular schedule, like so many hours a day or one or two days a week?
She and Mr. Finn have worked out a schedule at the high school, and then she has worked out a schedule, again, pending board approval with the middle school. Ms. Hughes and the team there have scheduled her for their units when they have their units.
So, some units, some not, okay.
All of the teachers will be using her for their yoga meditation units, but they don't do them all at the same time, so she's worked with them on that schedule as well, so.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Student vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Close carries 401. Have an information item tonight, report on developer fees, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Dickerson. I'm actually going to ask Mr. Zeta to come up and present this item, since he put together this report, and it's fairly robust, but it looks at how we're spending our developer fees for previous years, and then looking forward, how we're going to spend them, or plan on spending them in the out years. As you know, the developer fees are deposited into a separate capital facilities account, Fund 25. This way they can be accounted for separately from the rest of the agency's activities. The developer fees are used to refurbish our existing facilities per our facilities master plan. The developer fees collected offset the cost of housing potential for students based on the additional square feet of livable housing. Happy to report, the fees are $2.05 per square foot, which is unchanged from prior years. The majority of the developer fees collected in the fund were used for the rental fee on the Thurston Middle School leased portable classrooms, and also on the Laguna Beach High School Artist Theater, ADA upgrades. Looking forward, funds have been identified for use at Thurston Middle School on the classroom modernization project. The outlook for five years shows that the funds are insufficient to fund the classroom modernization project at Thurston Middle School, which we know, but are pleased to report that they will add up to about 19 percent of that portion of that capital project there. So they are a considerable amount of funds, and we're happy to have them identified for use at Thurston. So any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Appreciate having this update so that we stay apprised of what's involved with developer fees. I just had one question, is this just on residential development?
No, it's for residential and commercial, although commercial's much less per square foot. I think it's 33 cents. I think, I think you're right. Sorry I did not mention that.
That's okay.
I don't think we get a lot of commercial fees.
Well, with some of the proposals on, coming before the Laguna City Council, I think that could change. Some potential. And, but it doesn't, the only thing I didn't see in here is I thought, and maybe they changed it, that if you added a certain percentage on, does that still exist?
Yeah, it has to be over 500 square feet total.
So 500 square feet, but not a percentage? So in other words, if you took, okay.
No, it's, it's just the 500 square feet, and it has to be livable space, it can't be like a storage shed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our action items. Our first action item, item 14, Approval of Updated Memorandum of Understanding Between the Laguna Beach Police Department, City of Laguna Beach, and the Laguna Beach Unified School District to Provide Two School Resource Officers to LBUSD Schools. Dr. Valoria.
So just to give some history, back in August 21st of 2018, the board approved our first MOU with the City of Laguna Beach and Laguna Beach Police Department. That was to run through August of 2021, which would, which provided us a school resource officer, where the district was funding a 25,000 of the cost of the SRO. During the last several months, been ongoing conversations in board direction to sit down with the city and have a conversation about potentially an additional SRO, which I have done and sat down, and today you have LBPV staff here, Captain Calvert, to kind of run through a really quick presentation on just-
through a really quick presentation on just some of the data and some of the conversations that we've had over the last several months. So without Captain Calvert.
Good evening, thank for having me. My name is Jeff Calvert and I'm currently a captain with the Laguna Beach Police Department. I oversee patrol operations. I also work closely with the chief with strategic planning and implementation and I was heavily involved in the conversations with the first MOU with Dr. Valoria, Valoria, the city manager and the chief. But before I get started with my presentation, on behalf of the Laguna Beach Police Department, city manager John P. Tagg, and the entire city team, we want to extend our deepest condolences to family and friends of the Wilkinson family for the loss of Jasmine. Nothing impacts the city more or deeply than the loss of a child and the outpouring of love and support has been nothing short of remarkable. It makes me and our team proud to be part of this unique village, so thank you. The benefit of having a school resource officer embedded in the schools during this time, from the onset of the traffic collision to Cornelius going to the hospital to talk to the family and that communication between the school district, the police department, and the Wilkinson family was paramount to where we're at today. And the collaboration during this incident is a prime example of why the SRO is such an important component within our community. The Laguna Beach City Council recognized the need as well and October 29th unanimously approved the addition of a second SRO. They also approved the inter-jurisdictional agreement signed by Sheriff Don Barnes to extend the Laguna Beach Police Department jurisdiction to include the El Moro campus. Upon approval tonight, both SROs will share the workload across all four schools across a five-day work week. One SRO will work Monday through Thursday, the other one will work Tuesday through Friday. They'll both be on what's called a 4-10 schedule, four days a week, 10 hours a day. That's per the agreement with the Laguna Beach Police Employees Association and the officers, that can't be changed. More than 50% of the time will be spent on education. I feel, over the last year Cornelius has done more than 50% education, you know, whether that's one-on-one or in the classroom, but we understand it's an important metric, so we're exploring ideas to better track how much education the two SROs will actually do in the classroom and with the kids. The other time we'll be spent investigating, investigating cases that either occur on campus or kids that go to one of the schools and there's a nexus off-campus where, you know, they may have gotten in some trouble. We wanted to get ahead of this, so we sent out a solicitation and two very qualified officers submitted letters of interest for the position, so we're excited about that. The testing is next week and Dr. Valoria is going to have two of his executive staff in the testing process to help us make that final decision. Each of the SROs will have their own assigned vehicles, which is great because it'll give them autonomy to hit all four campuses, so they're not mirrored up together traveling from one campus to the next, so they'll, they'll be moving to different schools. Next week, that's already on, to get ahead of it, it's already on the city council for the purchase of a new vehicle. During the summer months, you know, this is the first year summer that Cornelius has been embedded in the school district and he was heavily involved in summer school. We had our first teen leadership academy, which was well-received not only by the kids but the parents as well. And Cornelius, it allowed him the opportunity during the summer to catch up on his workload from the school year. As you know, he's been, being pulled in 100 different directions. I can't believe he does all he does. He's like ubiquitous, right? I can't, I can't believe, I think he's on one campus, but he's on another, so he's, he's really carved a leadership path in his new role and we're really proud of him and the things that he's done. That three-week window where summer school is out and the new school year begins is an opportunity for him to go to training or actually take a vacation. So that's, that's what he's been doing through, throughout the summer. These are the calls for service at each of the schools. In the 219 stats, it's through October 31st, but you can see that a lot of the, the numbers are relatively the same from 2018 to 2019 as far as the calls for service. And you see below seven are proactive and then it says SRO below. So, or 10 are proactive and the SRO below. So what that means is that the, the, the second line down, the proactive numbers are police officers that are going on campus to make those interactions. That's, that's embedded in that top number. All, and that does not include the SRO number down below. So there, our officers and our SRO are not only visiting the schools, but they're participating in different activities throughout all four schools. In asking Cornelius, you know, what he does throughout the year, I kind of broke it down into four separate areas. Safety, classroom and education, intervention, and events. So under safety, he deals with custody disputes. He identifies problems on campus. He does active shooter education like he just talked about. He likes to be visible on the campuses during breaks and during lunch, but like I said before, he can't be everywhere all the time. He's also heavily involved in event planning, track meets, and our annual graduation. Classroom education, he talks about code of conduct, drug awareness, sexting and dating awareness, social media and vaping safety and training, which are really important issues right now. And like I talked about before, the teen leadership academy and then we had the mock crime scene investigation, which was well-received by, by the students, gave them a, a look behind the curtain on some of the things that we do day in and day out. He also talks to them how to be, talks to the kids about being good citizens and upstanders and having good manners, all important things. Under intervention, he provides that ongoing mentorship and coaching to the students. It's something that can't be quantified when you talk to him. He's, and when he walks on campus, kids gravitate towards him. And he's, he's established those relationships. And it's, like I said, it's very, very difficult to quantify, but those relationships are the reason why he is so successful. And then his continued partnership with the, the executive staff here, the, the teachers and the parents has just been phenomenal. Events, Cookies with a Cop, Read Across America, Jog-a-Thon, Walk to School Day that Cornelius just talked about, Homecoming, Graduation, Winter Formal, Parent Nights, Sporting Events. The, like Corn said, he's trying, he's, he's bringing all the police officers along with him and because he wants to know other officers as well. And like I mentioned before, the two other candidates are highly qualified and well-respected within our organization, so whoever's selected, you'll have a, you'll have a good choice. That's, that ends my presentation. If anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Maybe we start with a public comment? And I do have one card from Liz Black.
Hi, I'm Liz Black. I think I know most of you. I'm a parent at El Moro, I'm also the PTA president at El Moro, and I personally want to thank Dr. Valoria and the school board and just for all your support for expanding the SRO program. We have some really passionate parents at El Moro who have really, worked really hard and just having a collaborative, having collaboration with you guys has been huge. Not every school district, I'm sure, doesn't have that kind of relationship and I'm just so grateful for that. Amber Offield, one of our leaders in our safety committee, was not able to be here, so she put together something and I'm going to just read it real quick. "We would like to thank you, the board, along with Jason and Jeff, for recognizing the need and value of the SRO program from a safety and social emotional perspective. The fact that you made a decision to hire the first SRO, Corporal Ashton, shows your dedication to the students and community. Adding a second SRO at the elementary level is an opportunity to grow on the tremendous success Corporal Ashton has provided the students over the past year. His professionalism, dedication, and heart for guiding the students through challenges is a gift and we are lucky to have him in our district. Expanding the SRO program will provide necessary support for basic safety needs, but also build trust, respect, and responsibility between our youngest students and authority figures. This will be helpful, this will help elementary students build and strengthen their social emotional skills and prepare for mature situations they will inevitably encounter in middle and high school. We all know that a social emotional support is a big topic and hard to address comprehensively. We believe that having an SRO available to students, a familiar face with authority to help them, is a major component when they are looking for someone to turn to for help. LBUSD will also be ahead of the SRO trend because research shows that the SRO programs in schools are growing quickly and legislation is getting passed with SRO requirements. Thank you in advance for listening to us, the community, and working with the City of Laguna Beach to collaborate on the SRO salary and needs. This investment you are making in our students will continue to yield great results. Thank you."
Any other questions? Question, okay. Should we have the motion or just go ahead? Go ahead. Okay, okay. So what's the Laguna Beach Police Department's policies to patrol the city?
Their policies to patrol the city?
Yeah, just patrol.
So we service nine square miles and 24,000 residents, 6.5 million visitors. So our, that, those nine square miles are broken up into three beats. So we, we have a concept of team policing, which means that we have certain officers and supervisors and detectives that are assigned to a specific beat that they take ownership over.
So geographical beat?
Correct, yes. And so, beat one now will extend to El Moro and kind of get wrapped up into that envelope.
Okay. And then the other two or the other three schools in the district, what beats do they fall into?
They fall into the beat two, so.
So all of them fall into beat two?
Uh, yeah, so one of them falls into, El Moro will fall into beat one and then beat two, so beat three, correct? Yeah, beat three, yeah.
Beat three, this would be beat three that they fall into. Okay. I know you were part of the process for the first SRO, but not, not here presenting to it, I know it's the chief, but, one of the goals was to reduce the incidence of school violence and we were hoping, I know at that time, that we would get reports back on these tangible data points right before the 21st, before we made any more decisions. I know that parents brought up some concerns who were at the point of a decision now, right, but I still would like the data in making these decisions, but I feel like this data would have been very helpful to have well before tonight, so we could have asked questions about it and thought about it prior to this meeting. But I also want to know on what we had in place for the SRO, what our mission statements were from the chief, what her missions were, was to reduce school violence. So incidents of school violence, I don't know how you track that and how, I love Corn, but how Corn, how that has changed because we had Corn or SRO. Carol, can I ask you if you mean violence coming onto the campus or? It's her mission. Among the students? I believe it's among the students, but I don't know. It's within her mission. Same to me, we have very little.
It's very, it's very difficult to quantify prevention.
Okay.
So, you know, when you, you can talk at, you can talk about the numbers that occur on campus, but the officer driving by the school that maybe prevented somebody from walking on campus, those things, you just can't quantify.
Right, so the patrol of driving by, I completely agree. Right, you can't quantify that. I just meant like she actually put on, she, reducing the incidence of school violence. So I was just wondering what the data was that she started with and what the data is and it, and that's fine, I'm just asking, that's why I was like, you weren't here, so I'm not trying to put you in the hot seat. I know I emailed a bunch of stuff to Dr. Valoria, I was just hoping we'd have it. She also instead maintaining a safe and secure environment on the school grounds? Would that also be by patrolling? Is that what you're saying? By just being present that you're doing that?
That's through, it goes well beyond that. It involves the collaboration of Cornelius and having those conversations with the kids and having early intervention with those kids that may be acting out. And I can tell you, we don't have quantifiable data, but we have, you know, the data from him and those conversations that he's had with kids with text-to-tip and other conversations where, you know, he's actually prevented bullying or other, other incidents from occurring on school campus. So those conversation and communication, that's important.
And how do you distinguish that different from Dr. Keller's work as well as all the teachers' work?
Cornelius works in collaboration with Dr. Keller, so it's, it's a, it's a unified front and, you know, when he has, when he has information that, that Dr. Keller needs to be aware of, then he'll, he'll make him a part of that conversation.
Yeah, I think the, the key, just trying to answer the question, when Chief and I spoke about just the minimizing, you know, the threats on campus to students, and obviously we have very, very low rates, we have very safe campuses, our students feel that way. It comes out in survey results, I think our goal is, is to continue to have that data point as high as it is. So we'll, in it's, in our first year here, as we kind of looked at the data, it'll be interesting to see as we turn the corner this next year, what the data looks like from our student body. And I'm hopeful that they'll continue to feel safe, if not safer. You know, we've put a lot of things into place, both structurally, but also just having increased presence. You know, prior, I think, to having an SRO, we didn't have the police presence on our campuses that we do now. So for example, Cookies with a Cop, that didn't exist prior, so we weren't having that, that positive interactions and interface, which is, was a topic and a goal of both the chief and I is to have that, knowing that oftentimes on the weekends or during the summertime, our students are, when they're not with us, they're interfacing with the local law enforcement in different ways. So having that relationship is, is really a positive thing. But to quantify it obviously is a challenge because, you know, if the metric is, you know, two events a year and you have one one year and none the next and three the next, it doesn't, isn't necessarily the ability to show a, a growth or a reduction in some ways. But her goal is to keep and reduce and keep it at low levels is what she and I have discussed, but obviously without a baseline data of what the initial data is, it would be hard to provide a, you know, quantity currently, so.
Right, and I'm trying, I'm trying to understand the difference between community and police work, which is a goal of the community police, right? That's your goal, patrolling is part of that, versus education, which Cornelius is this amazing human being, but he's not an educator, he's not a social worker, he's not a therapist, he's not a counselor, and his, his fiduciary duty along in the MOU is about, he has different duties than anyone within Dr. Keller or any teacher's duties on what you report and what information is confidential. So I'm just trying to distinguish the difference of when we talk about paying for, you know, $200,000 plus, it's very different because the majority of it's police work, the majority is not education. So I'm trying to distinguish which is education, which isn't education. That's what my questions are about. And since her goals, I was just starting with the goals, and if you don't have the data, it's fine, it's just hard to make decisions without data. Are there other organizations or citizens like you guys do work with? Because not all of the kids, or 17% of the population, that's under the age of 18. So are there other things that you guys do with those kids at other schools? Is there anything you guys do with community policing with them, with kids at the other schools in town?
So I know that the officers, not necessarily Cornelius, but our other officers are heavily, heavily involved with the Boys and Girls Club and we also have interactions with Annalise and St. Catherine's School as well.
And do you charge for those services?
No, but we're not, the St. Catherine's School and Annalise, there, there's not a dedicated officer to those schools.
Okay. And there are other, any other ways in which you have community policing in town? Not with students, but with other citizens? Where you work on community policing? Is there other things that you guys do to bring awareness and relationships with police officers?
Absolutely. We have Citizens Academy, CERT program, Coffee with a Cop, you know, we have a downtown business liaison unit that interacts with our businesses, business owners, the bouncers there. So yeah, so our foundation is community policing, so yes, we're heavily involved with the, the community in different aspects as well.
And do you charge those businesses for that service? And do you charge those businesses for that service?
Uh, just the, uh, just the cost of the officers being down there, yeah. And it's prevention, you know, having the, the, those, uh, just like our downtown business liaison unit, it's having those conversations and reducing, uh, the, the crime in the downtown area. That I can tell you, uh, has mitigated crime and, you know, but you can't quantify prevention.
But I'm just asking, i- it's not you and what you guys do, it's the city, the, the charges. So, I'm just asking the questions about the charges, right? To understand if you charge other citizens the same way that we're being asked to be charged for police. Okay. Okay. Would you have a motion? No, keep asking. Okay, sorry. What is a police officer's duties? Like, what are their actual duties? Day in and day out, like, what are the duties of a police officer? I'm unaware, I don't.
Well, their primary duties are, uh, public safety. That's, that's, that's their, uh, their mission, uh, to protect life and property.
Okay. So, um, let's try, um... And then, I know Korn's standing back there, but I know if you're arresting someone, you're reading the Miranda rights, but I don't know if Korn is teaching students and, you know, Miranda rights and what that means. I don't know if that's part of what he's educating on, but he's nodding his head back there, okay. Um, what other educational programs, um, do you guys provide? I, I guess I need to understand more of the educational aspect of what Korn's doing. Because two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of education or counselors or other things. So, I'm trying to understand what the educational impact is of what Korn's doing.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a balance, you know, with, with education and, uh, obviously, preventing, uh, uh, school violence. But the, the needs of the SROs will really be dictated by, uh, Dr. Valoria and, uh, his team.
And just so we're clear, the, the amount's, uh, one sixty-four, um...
Well, plus all the variables, supervisor time and overtime.
Well, the overtime is separate, that would be a, a separate, and that's per agreement, but, uh...
But the MOU is, oh, there's no cap on the MOU, it's open-ended, it can end up being whatever, they could end up.
To future billings of actual costs, the current costs, uh, right now. I just wanted to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that they.
I'm just, just trying to reflect what the actual agenda item says.
Okay. And, and it's that number plus future cost, the actual costs of the vehicle, the maintenance, all of that?
No, that's rolled into that cost.
The, the, the maintenance is rolled into the, is rolled into that cost?
So, the district shall provide fifty percent of the total compensation paid to the two officers provided by the city and related vehicle support costs. So, it's rolled into the costs.
What if we end up with different officers that both have really high salaries and benefits? Then that, that number would change?
The, the number would be based off of actual costs, it could go up or it could go down.
Okay. And then, is there, Dr. Valoria, are there any state mandates that require a police officer to teach a class? Is there anything that has to be taught by a police officer?
No.
And do any of your police officers have teacher credentials or any other licensing for therapy or other social emotional teaching?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, they're really not doing that? Because to do, to do that, they would have to be with a teacher and they're assisting a teacher? Would that be correct? Okay.
Every time I teach.
There's a teacher in the room?
They're the teacher.
Okay.
And they, and they rec, they actually summon me to the class. So, they want me, they want to incorporate what they're teaching.
Into what they're teaching, okay. And then, um, on the social emotional aspect, there's licensing to do that, right? And so, I understand comforting someone and building a relationship, which is community policing, that's your job, right? Versus what the job is of a therapist or a social worker, someone with the help of a child, which is different. Okay. I just, I just think that this is a lot of money for something that right now, we, we pay twenty-five thousand dollars for. I have one more question here. Oh, and then, are you aware of, um, all of our specific site safety plans?
Are we aware of them? Yes.
And you participate in them? There's, there's an article in the paper that just said that we don't have one, so I'm just making sure. I, I see them, I see that you're part of them, I just want to ask in public.
Yeah, it's required by ed code that we have both a police officer and the fire department as part of our safety plans moving forward. That was more recent legislation.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that you're, you've actually seen them, you're aware of them, you're...
We, we've had a lot of conver, our relationship with the school district, uh, had, over the last couple of years with Dr. Valoria's leadership, has really been strengthened and we have, uh, ongoing meetings, uh, with the district. We actually have table top exercises to go over different, uh, different scenarios. Uh, and so, uh, the, so the teachers, uh, and the students are aware of, we know what they do, uh, need to do in the event of emergency.
Okay.
And I would just add, even be, even before that, I mean, we've seen a real increase and a real closeness in the collaboration. But for years, we've worked on safety plans as far as, um, police, I mean, I would go back to when Nancy Blade was high school principal, that they were, there was a bomb threat at one time with that, that we really worked on having, making sure that our first responders knew the layout of our campuses, that they had the maps, they had the room numbers. Because if they got called to a certain room and they didn't know where that room was, they would've wasted valuable time trying to find out. So, that's been, and that's been a lot of years. So, we just continue, in my view, we continue to improve that. And societal times have put a lot of pressure on us, of course, to, you know, to try to cover all the bases, which are, you know, it's pretty hard to do as far as, um, societal safety. Because as our students see by, since we're flooded in it with the media, that it's everywhere. It's out in the street, it's at, you know, it's at a church, it's at a concert, I mean, it's... So, I think we need to make sure that while we keep our students safe, that we certainly are cognizant of their, how they interpret it at young ages, so that it doesn't become a scary situation. I mean, it just becomes something that we work, but I, in my mind, we've had a close col, close collaboration with both police and fire, uh, that has only increased in, in recent years. And that's, I think that that's, the SRO has been on top of that, I mean, that was already in place. And I think that all the, you know, all the police officers would be aware of that.
I just wanted.
I know, but it was.
I just wanted to hear, I just wanted.
I just wanted to make sure that anybody listening or watching didn't think that we were just now starting to put together some safety plans.
Right, no.
And then, I mean, you've seen that, that booklet that, or document that Jeff has. And everybody that works is required to be, and it covers a lot of scenarios, so.
Okay, okay, okay. And we've gotten to read through that, I just wanted to make sure that I was, I just, it says you are, you're here. I just wanted to ask to make sure.
Is that, did you have more questions? Want to start with our student reps and part of the discussion, anything you would like to ask or contribute?
Okay, um, I mean, I think, I think it'd be great to have another student resource officer. I mean, whenever, um, Korn's on campus with the students, it makes a huge impact. Um, and I feel like if we have two resource offer, officers, that means there's more opportunities to see a resource offer, officer around campus. Um, and I think even just seeing them around campus does a lot, um, so I, I think it's a great idea.
I was just gonna say, I agree, from a student's perspective, this is really reassuring.
I really appreciate hearing from you guys and that it does help at, at your high school campus. And I want to thank Liz and Amber and all the parents who put so much hard work into making this happen. Thank you.
So, how mu, Korn, how much work do you do on, um, on the technology side of it? On the Predator, that, that end of it that can be invisible to people unless they're experiencing it, right? Or their families?
I do, I do quite a bit of work on Predator or, um, related incidents. I get a lot of, of calls or text messages or, uh, face-to-face communications with students that are being solicited, um, on Instagram, on social media, and I help alleviate those problems. It's difficult to sit before you can talk about our, so many issues that when you start getting into personal and like mental health, those are things that I don't feel comfortable talking about because I have kids that are coming to me constantly in confidence. And I, I develop those rapport, and I think those on the social emotional side can understand, um, with those privacy, um, you know, measurements that are put into place, those measures are put into place. It's constant and it's, it's continuous. There's never a time, I think, yeah, the principals here, I think they can attest to the fact that there's... My days are const, I'm constantly on the go, working through conflict with children, um, on all levels, not just high school. And even so much to where I'm constantly being, I'm dealing with one incident and I'm being pulled to deal with another, that's continuous all day. And so, those things are hard to staff when you're dealing, when I'm talking to twenty, thirty, forty kids in a day. Literally, as I'm walking through campus, kids are coming up to me and talking to me about problems that they're dealing with. And how rude would it be to pull out my phone and try to staff that? Does that make sense? And the, and these issues are not just one-time issues, it's when I'm working with the kid, it's continuous throughout the school year, it's not just a one-contact situation and I move on. I'm constantly checking on our children throughout the school year. Um, the accessibility, um, I feel like having a, a second school resource officer is, is very important and even from a safety component, just some of your presence is a deterrent. Being on campus is a deterrent. Um, being in the classrooms, you have to understand that I may not have teaching credentials, but I'm a subject matter expert in the things I'm talking about. And a lot, a lot of our officers are, they are drug recognition experts. I'm a detective, I, I, I am an expert in dealing with sex crimes and child molestation and dating violence. The subjects that, that teachers are asking me to come in and help with, um, are things of my expertise. And so, I want you to understand that, I don't have the credentials, but I, I'm an expert. I have over two hundred hours of mental health training when I've gone through, um, academies to learn about mental health and how to deal with them. So, I don't have the licensing, but, or the credentials, but I have the experience in dealing with it.
Well, mine would be, in the MOU, it just talks about the fact you're a police officer. Like, it's really clear about you're a police officer and you're reporting, uh, your duties are, are what they are, right? And I understand the duties on this, I just don't understand like the reporting duties. Like, if someone said, um, "I want to hurt myself" or something, whether you have to report that, whether that ends up in the police database or whether that's you're just doing it.
Right, whenever we have, um, a, a student that is in crisis, which does happen frequently, um, when our social emotional, um, um, counselor or counselors, uh, are dealing with those issues and they feel that I need to be aware when the child needs to go to the hospital, uh, they will summon me and I will do a secondary assessment and make that determination, which is a consistent thing, unfortunately.
And if you did, if they, if you care at first, then do you go to the counselors?
Absolutely, there's never a decision that a school resource officer will make, whether it's me or another, solo. There will always be an administrator involved in that decision-making process. Even if there's something criminal, a, a school res, unless it's an atrocious type crime where the officer has to re, react right away and, and, and stop something bad from happening. So, aside from that, there'll never be a time, even when a crime is coming on campus, where the, the SRO, um, w- won't be working with leadership, will work together in unison. Um, and so, it's a partnership and, and that's what I want to be clear on. Um, the two candidates that we have that are testing, if I had to handpick two people that would be perfect for this job, it'd be those two applicants. So, it's a blessing to have them and their interest because they've shown, um, interest, um, since the position even, way before the position was even, um, a, a discussion or a topic. They, they, they have experience in dealing with children, um, very passionate about, you know, being in that presence and that role model for our kids.
And in my question, I'm trying to, um, balance, right, what taxpayers are already paying for safety? Like, what they're already paying for in their police services? Well, I, Korn, you know, but like more in, not that you're anonymous, but you're amazing and, right? But what they're paying for police work versus what we're paying for within the SRO? So, and I guess I'm just trying to separate that. And sometimes hearing directly from Korn helps in how it, um, it's more than just complete community service, community policing, right? But it seems like that's what it is when you see him, right? That's what he's doing. And so, but it seems like it's a layer beyond that. So, that was helpful to understand. That's really my only.
It's interesting that hearing all of your questions, and I know, um, having Officer Corporal Ashton this year has really sold the value of this position. And I know that there is, oh, what, one or two years that went into back and forth work, particularly between Dr. Valoria and, and the police chief, to get to the point where we made that step. Um, and now, I think that's, that is a lot what has to do with wanting to expand it just because of the merit, many valuable, um, services that he provides to the students and the staff across a big range, that then they, it's too much to cover for schools. So, we want to continue that. But it's interesting that it, behind it, behind it, at this next last discussion, because there's been a lot of other meetings going into this with a few leadership from the district and leadership from the city, that it comes unfortunately down to dollars. So, that raises the question on the dollars. And that, but it, what then, when I step back from that and I think, okay, that's, that's true, but it's in a sense, it's all taxpayer money. So, when I look at it that way, I'm thinking, if we get, if we see for our school such value that you asked about like Citizens Academy, if I'm paying tax dollars to the police department, it doesn't mean that somebody specifically then has to provide the money for that. That's part of their community policing. And so, it's already the tax.
Right, I know it's gonna get confusing. But, but we, we're the recipients of, but we're the recipients of the same thing.
And so, I'm, I mean, I, I know, I understand your point, but...
But we went and charged a educated police officer's child because of, or a city employee's child because of a city employee and tax dollars to the city, it's just, it's, it, it seems unfair to the teachers. It seems unfair to the kids in the sense of the money. The, the city has the money, the city can pay for the services the city is supposed to provide its citizens.
I think there's many ways to look at it, there's many sides to look at it, which you're bringing up some of your concerns. But I see when you mentioned, um, you know, the teachers, if the teachers have a, a student body on their campus that is feeling more comfortable, more safe, more supported, and has an additional person that they can go to when they need that support, then their teaching environment is better.
Something for the teachers also. Okay. And this isn't all, but some teachers who would rather not be identified, um, do not, eh, do not feel very safe at El Moro campus later. And I know when I was there, when I was really, when I was young, I worked there and it was my first time teaching a whole class, not teaching, not being a speech pathologist or teaching special ed. So, I stayed late and men started coming by my classroom and wanting to get in at night. And so, I got scared and thought, well, I'll make other arrangements and I'll come really early, which I did. But then you, because it's on Coast Highway, you can see the car there. And men knew my car and started coming early in the morning. And it was frightening for me. And so, the next year, I didn't teach there anymore, I, I went to Top of the World. And I know other teachers there, because it's very exposed, feel uncomfortable. And I'm so glad that somebody will be patrolling by for the teachers and people who are there. That's just...
But that's to my point of that's police work. That's their work is to keep their citizens safe. But no, I know that changed, I'm so happy that changed for me, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that that is their police work. Because no matter where your car is parked, if someone saw your car and they come looking for you because they saw your car, they would do that and they would do the police work in helping to keep that person from coming to find you just because they saw your car, right? No matter where you're at. And that's, that's all I mean, but I'm just trying to do the separation, I, and I do get the point. I was just bringing up comments that I've been reading around teachers and, some teachers just.
Your vote discussion?
Pardon me?
Oh, okay. Sorry, ready? You have, you've asked all your questions, okay. So, then it will be, um, we're ready to vote, so I have to give the student vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's four oh one, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to come and go through all your information for us.
Thank you so much, thanks for answering all my questions.
Uh, item fifteen, approval for appointment of two LBUSD board representatives and one alternate representative to serve as members of the College and Career Advantage Board. Dr. Valoria.
All right, it's that time of year. Um, typically, we would do this at the organizational meeting, but because, um, College and Career Advantage Board meets at different times, we have to actually do this a little ahead of the organizational meeting. Um, so, uh, at this time, um, I will take, uh, not... Um, so, uh, at this time, um, I will take nominations of our interest to, um, be on the CCA Board. We need two, um, board members and one alternate.
So?
So, can we have a discussion or do we, I have to? Okay, so my, so presently I'm with Jan, and I'd be happy to do it again, but I know Dee's the alternate. And if you're interested in doing it, I wanna say, is it four meetings a year, sometimes five?
It's changed.
It varies, they cancel some.
There will be new leaders, because Patty is retiring, so they could change. So whatever I state could completely change. Um, it is down in Capistrano. It's, there's only two Laguna Board members and three Capo. So you can sort out how that kind of. Well, just generally, it's more, it's very much business, it's very much, I'm, I'm happy to take it on again. I'm happy to. Okay. Okay, I will say this, once you get a little experience, I feel more confident going in. The first two or three meetings, Capo does it kind of differently, so you're kind of muddling through. And now I figured out kind of the style of delivery and content, so I'm happy to do it again. Jan, did you wanna do it again?
Sure, I can, I can do it again.
If you, if you have like a passion for it, you tell me and I can hand it off to you.
Does it say Dee, you would like it?
No, I, I know, I would like it. I'm very interested in it, but.
Okay, then I'll, I'll hand off to you and I'll be the alternate. How about that?
The meetings are at eight thirty.
Every now and then they'll throw you for a loop with some strange timed odd day with not much notice, so.
I remember this summer, I was going back and forth a number of times because I was taking his place and then.
Kept changing.
I'll give you my tips on communication, yeah.
Okay, give me your, give me your tips.
Asking them.
And then, um. I assumed you asked before we go on public comment on this item, oh, sorry. And then we can have a motion, we need a motion.
A second.
So the motion is for Dee and Jan with Peggy's altering.
Yeah. Does that, does that work?
Sure, sure.
And, and then I had a, a question, I, because I look at their minutes. Did you have to miss a couple times this summer, Jan?
No, I missed an afternoon meeting that was like going to be a fifteen-minute meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, they just had to, that's one of the things that Peggy is referring to. Those kind of things never used to happen, but it's Capo's side really, and they have the three people. So as long as they, I think there were.
There were four of us in the meeting, yeah. It was a closed session on an issue and.
Something they needed an immediate meeting for, but before our next regularly scheduled meeting, and it just didn't.
Didn't work for you because it was so immediate? I, I get it, I just wondered why it wasn't called, but I totally understand now.
They just swoop in and will say, "Are you free next week?"
Oh, okay.
And so.
Well, they had said it would be like fifteen minutes and you know, so.
Yeah, the drive was longer than the meeting, yeah. But I was there.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Student vote?
Oh, was it not on?
Is on.
Yes.
Board members, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Item sixteen, approval of annual organizational meeting. Dr. Valoria.
Uh, again, it's that time of year, as required by Education Code thirty-five one forty-three, the Board needs to select a day and time to conduct its annual organization meeting. Um, it's required to be held, uh, within a prescribed fifteen-day period. For two thousand nineteen, this fifteen-day period is from December sixth through December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Education Code further requires that this annual meeting time be selected at the regularly scheduled board meeting held immediately prior to the first day of the fifteen-day period, which is this meeting, so. Correct, it's, uh, December seventeenth.
Yes.
You didn't turn it on. Board members, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Uh, action item seventeen, approval, positive certification of first interim report. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh, staff is recommending positive certification of our first interim report. I will give a brief overview of the overall, the total report. Take questions at the end if needed. I'd like to first extend gratitude to my staff, Raymond and Lee, or, I'm sorry, Raymond and Twee. This is one of the soonest that we've brought the first interim to the Board for approval due to our meeting schedule, and they do, as always, great work in helping prep. So the general overview of the first interim from the adopted budget is a slight reduction in property tax revenue growth from four point seven percent to four point five percent. Um, we increased our local revenues to reflect grant awards and one-time funds that weren't known at, but adoption time. Increase in services and other operating expenditures, primarily in safety. Increased capital outlay and adjusted our ending fund balance to reflect the carryover. Um, even though there were projecting a slight decrease in the property tax, which is, uh, put as a recommendation from the Assessor's Office for this year, um, the other LCFF sources actually increased. So our net revenue position was actually up almost eleven thousand dollars. And then we are also going to recommend an increase of five hundred thousand from General Fund towards Fund Seventeen. The adopted budget had five hundred thousand, but as you can see in the chart at the bottom there, in order to sustain the percentage of our total, um, total reserves as a percentage of our budget, so not increase, um, it would require a one million dollar contribution to stay right at that fifty percent match, or fifty percent amount, which is the targeted amount in our community-funded differential, which is spelled out in Board Policy Three Thousand One, which basically is a calculation stating, um, if we were to lose our community-funded status and we would only get the California State Minimum Guarantee per student, it's about half of our current budget. So that's why we wanna be at that level. When we look at the multi-year, um, you see expenditures exceeding revenues. However, um, those expenditures, just as a reminder, include transfers to ourselves into Fund Thirteen, Seventeen, Forty, and that amounts to a little over three point three million dollars for this year. Let me see, we're a very good financial position for this year, being able to meet all of our reserve requirements and then a steady fund balance growth in the out years.
What was I told at the beginning?
Three point three five million of transferring out to ourselves. In terms of fund balance, what changed from adopted budget? You can see up here, revolving cash doesn't change, remains unchanged. Routine restricted maintenance and reserve for economic uncertainties increased, just naturally because of expenditure amounts increased. And so those are tied to a percentage of total expended funds for the year. And assigned potential one-time expenditures also changed. Um, that will likely change at each reporting period as it's, uh, um, for potential one-time costs. With that, I'd take any questions regarding first interim and recommend that the Board approve a positive certification.
First ask for public comment on this item? And then any board questions? I just have one question and on these, um, when you reference the increases, uh, I'm on page one of ninety-three in your report, that those, you mentioned several categories, but is the bulk of it from the negotiated salary increases?
Yes, the bulk of it is from the negotiated salary increases. Um, it was, as you may recall, in the adopted budget, it was booked in the committed fund balance, but not applied to the appropriate classified and specified salary amounts in the object codes, and now it is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Motion please?
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? Thank you again for the, I really like these reports, so you can pass that on to your team that works on them. It's not, you know, we pay attention to it and that's, they need to know that. Student vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Uh, action item eighteen, approval of Resolution Nineteen dash twelve, recognition and support of National Nutrition Month. Mr. Dixon.
Yes, thank you. Um, we would like staff recommending the Board, uh, review and approve Resolution Nineteen dash twelve, uh, recognizing and supporting the National Nutrition, Nutrition Month. Uh, we've taken many great strides in this district and thank you for your support in bolstering our nutrition services program. This resolution gives us a chance to reaffirm those measures that we've done in terms of providing all organic produce, sustainability within our meal program itself, biodegradable utensils and plates, and then, um, of course, having the healthier meat and poultry options, um, that we think is very important. So with that, I would ask the Board review and hopefully approve this resolution.
Thank you. Public comment? Board questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second, Peggy and Carol. Any discussion? Oh, you have made a lot of strides in this area, and I'm particularly pleased to hear about the attention to the biodegradable, because that's a, a movement that's really important for, um, global interests. And it also gives good lessons to our students, I think, on that we're paying attention to, uh, environmental responsibility. But I just, you know, having some years of knowing what nutrition's gone through in this district, and I know you know that too, that I tied in with this, is why I'm always supportive that we do the, the, we support them with the transfer, because it's, uh, there were some years where they were totally required to make it or break it, and it's just hard with this community and the kids who buy lunch, and they need the, they need the support from our General Fund, so.
We'd be nowhere near where we are without your support of that transfer.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just want. I was just wondering, how long has there been biodegradable options for the utensils?
I'll have to get the exact information, but I know it's been several years.
Do you have a question or? Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna say thank you for the environmental impact and really thinking of the global crisis and how nutrition plays into that.
Student vote?
Yes.
Oh, roll call, roll call, roll call.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Armenden?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item nineteen, approval Resolution Nineteen dash thirteen, recognition and support for National Child Safety Protection Month. This is also Mr. Dixon, yes?
Yes. Uh, this is another resolution where staff is recommending for the Board to review and hopefully approve. Uh, it's recognition and support of National Child Safety Protection Month. And when you think of national child safety, it has to do with the campus safety, district and site safety plans and mental health supports and training for staff. Um, we've talked and heard a lot about the mental health side of our supports tonight, and I think that's very important. We've also talked about our district-wide safety plans, um, which continue to improve, and we're providing our new site-specific safety plans this year. And the Board has really, um, supported our staff with the creation of that social-emotional entire department within our district, which we saw how vital of a role it's played, not just throughout its entire time, but even last week with that specific event, unfortunately. Um, so with that, I would ask that the Board, um, please approve, review and approve this resolution.
Thank you. Public comment on this resolution? Any board questions?
Yes. Um, does this, when we're talking about hazards to the safety and well, safety and well-being of all students, does this include, um, the radiation hazards, the, the internet not being plugged in, those things?
I believe the, you know, the intent of the resolution is to encompass all safety hazards.
So we'll be looking into that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're looking into that.
So, uh, in speaking with, uh, several different agencies, all of our products are within FCC guidelines. So, uh, there are no other guidelines besides FCC guidelines that put off that kind of, um, emission. So everything we use is within the guidelines. So there wouldn't be anything to measure outside the guidelines, there's no standard to measure to.
So all of our classrooms have been tested with the meters?
They don't need to be tested, because all of our products that we purchase are within FCC guidelines. We don't purchase anything that would not, that's out of compliance with the FCC guidelines.
Well, several parents have been talking to me about the SEC guidelines being too high and having concerns.
We don't have any other guidelines to go from that the federal government puts out, so, and not instance, unfortunately. Until something is revised, we go off of what the guidelines are that we have, that we don't have a, a measure to test to other than the FCC guidelines, which, everything we purchase is within those, those ranges.
But there are other districts and other places who are adhering to a much stricter guideline. Uh, they're, well, like in Maryland, they're not using anything that isn't plugged in.
They have to follow some of these.
Yeah, I mean, they have to follow some standards, so they can't just create a standard, they must be following some experts.
They've decided that there is too much risk involved, and why take a chance with the kids if there's risk involved?
So again, I'll provide more information, a weekly update on this specific topic.
Okay.
Cause it's a little bit of a bird walk.
Okay, thanks.
You don't have a motion yet, correct? We just have questions.
I can't remember.
I got lost in that question, which was, which actually, you, it, we often do that, it evolves into discussion. So there's a real, there's a fine line in there.
Second. There you go.
I just wanted to ask, which is a question, but also could lead to discussion, that this, um, the last whereas, if there is anything that you, uh, you can bring to the Board at any time, if, on this advocating, um, at a state or higher level to, uh, for advancing the cause of student safety, I'm trusting that you'll bring that to us if there's anything that we can do, uh, like as a lobbying effort.
Well, and there's also Sandy Hip promise that.
Right, right.
Like that's something that we could all set up to be leaders of and.
But I'm thinking of it in any, in any category.
Oh, I know, I know, I just felt like that was one that came to mind.
Thank you. Um, you know.
And I guess when we're talking about safety, the other thing is we don't, we plan for all scenarios, including nightmare ones that parents worry about, right? We just don't provide that information to the public, because we don't wanna provide it to people who might, I don't know how to say the word, that might do the activity that we're, that we plan against.
Right.
Perpetrator scenario. Because we don't want a perpetrator to see that information, so we don't just provide it to the public.
No, not, not everything in the SEC plan is, is public.
Roll call for the students or do we have a student vote? Student vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Armenden?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, action item twenty, approval of Resolution Nineteen dash fifteen, Laguna Beach Unified School District adopting a conflict of interest code which supersedes all other conflict of interest codes and amends previously adopted resolutions. Dr. Valoria.
Uh, this just needs to be updated, uh, as we added, or changed the title of one of our staff members, see, am I right? Um, and so you'll see that the Exhibit A now reflects that additional role. So it's required for us to do this so that we can then, um, do our appropriate disclosure categories in January.
Any public comment on this resolution? Uh, any board questions? Motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Carol, Peggy, any discussion? I just wanted to make one little, I think, I need to say board members.
Thanks for keeping us looking.
Right, well, these things have to be updated regularly. Is this a roll call or something? Student vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Armenden?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Thank you. And our last agenda item, Board Members' Request for Items for Future Meetings and Board Member Requests for Information. And is there any public comment on this item? Okay, student vote, either one of you.
Yes.
No, you'd. Do you have a request? Do you have any information you'd like or?
No.
You'd like a class in college applications?
And we're Perry.
Um, I'd like to kind of back up something that Board Member Norman brought up before. I would really appreciate it if our meetings were not the same as City Council. There are quite a few items at City Council, there was one I would have liked to have been there for tonight, in fact. Um, even if we have to change the day, I would like us to think about that when we do our schedule next year, for next year. Thanks.
That'll be a discussion at the next bylaw meeting. It's a bylaw, uh, that's been asked to be reviewed. So your bylaw currently states that it's on the second and, um, second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Um, however, there's been requests to review that bylaw.
However, there's been requests to review that bylaw, so you can make any changes at that point as a Board majority.
That'll be the meeting on the twenty-fifth? Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have nothing.
I would like to request that we direct the superintendent, if my colleagues are in agreement, that we look in, that we have them look into term limits. Looking back at all my notes of parent input and stuff, that was one of those things that had come up during that, and I just don't know how that works. And so I, it'd be great to just have input of what does that look like and how does it look? Yeah, because.
Yeah, I support information on it.
Yeah.
Information?
Yeah, just info, yeah, I just want information, I don't know what it, which is, as I was going through the notes, I just wanted to see if it came up.
Notes from?
From when they were, when parents were speaking to me about stuff and, you know, kind of like checking off what we've done and, you know.
And an update?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just information, yeah.
Maybe what neighboring districts do and what it is and.
Yeah, there's a process that I can articulate, there's a couple of different things that have to happen, but yeah, I'm happy to.
I just had a, I don't have anything in that request, but I just would like to make a comment on Member Perry's request on that, just because I, and I know Keta would often weigh in on this also, just because in defense of the school district, that it was a big deal when we changed from Thursday night to Tuesday night, and we did that because we were having midnight, one o'clock meetings. And so you can adjourn a meeting, but there's a time limit to finish it. So if we went to Tuesday, we could reconvene on Thursday, so that we could leave like at eleven o'clock. And that, that was a long time ago, but that was an issue then. But it was a really, the community perception may have changed, but the community perception then was that you really need to stick to when your meetings are, as far as the community knowing when a school board or a city council meets. And so we collaborated with them, and we said, we'll take the second and the fourth, because you meet on the first and the third. And it was that way for many years, and it all worked nicely. And it was a recent, because I know Keta contacted a city council person who supported that and said, what do you think you're doing? I mean, we have, she's one of them, and we have board members that want to go to council meetings, but it really was on their shoulders. I mean, we have stuck to ours and, yeah. So I just felt I needed to say that in defense of what has happened, you know, that we want parents to know when we meet and they can count on it, and that it's the second and the fourth, so. But, and we.
But it certainly has worked.
But to change the day, to change the day to me would be, unless the community perception has really changed, that's a big deal. I mean, it's, it takes, it's so hard to get people to understand, really to pay attention to when you meet. Then if you, if you start moving it around, I would just have concern over that as far as day of the week, but.
So you have to evaluate what's on that. Majority.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
Student vote?
Yes.
Board members, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.